...C open Thursday, July 28th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fire evacuation. Actually, I wasn't going to do this time, but we have two people here, right here and here, so fire evacuation right behind you, right out that door. Also, out these doors and down the hallway and right out the back, and please, if God forbid there's any kind of issue, walk as far away from the building as possible. Roll call, please, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Louis Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alimo.
Here.
Kiran Majmuddar.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Guerrero is absent. Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Nicholas Lefakis, absent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting Thursday, June 30th?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman DeGray. Any discussion on the motion? Any additions or corrections to the minutes from Thursday, June 30th?
I don't have to abstain.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'm also going to abstain from...
Yep. All those in favor of accepting the minutes signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that there's six, seven?
Six to two.
Six approving and two abstentions. Yeah. Six approving and two abstentions.
Correct.
The abstentions are Commissioner Majmuddar and Commissioner Petronella. Of course, Commissioner Guerrero and Commissioner Lefakis are absent. Is there any public participation other than anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing that there's no one in the audience, there's no public participation. Is there any correspondence? Seeing no correspondence. Mr. Secretary, the first new business item, if you don't mind, please.
Yes. ARA number 02366 Enfield Street, Aquifer renewal for Marx Motorsports located over the A-43 Aquifer 66 Enfield Street LLC, applicant owner, map 35, lot 45 BG zone.
Thank you. Will the applicant or representative please come forward and...
Here.
Yeah. Just make sure the mic is on. It should be like a red button should be lit up, and if you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
Home address or work address?
Both, if you want, just for the record. Yeah.
How you doing? I'm Mark Boujack. I'm 3 Lockabana Road in Summers, Connecticut, and I own Marx Motorsports at 70 Enfield Street in Enfield, Connecticut.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Would staff just very quickly just...
So this is actually a renewal of a permit, and originally, the applicant had put in a number of different uses that were actually no longer valid because they weren't actually being utilized anymore, so it is only for repair or maintenance of vehicles or internal combustion engines of vehicles, which is classification D. And that's it.
That's it. And if it privileges the chair, the staff is recommending the approval of this. I see through the paperwork. You've done your inspections?
Yes.
So is there anything you'd like to add to this?
Well, I'm also representing Mineki as part of one building.
Yeah, we'll get that next one.
Okay, that's next? Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the reason why I filled that other one out is because that's the original owner of the building. I just copied what he did.
Sure.
But, yes, so that's all we do there is fix motors and motorcycles and whatnot, so...
Okay, thank you.
So all things are good?
All things are good. Any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Seeing no questions, will the secretary, anyone like to take a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve ARA number 2366 Enfield Street, Aquifer, registration renewal over the A-43 Aquifer for Marx Motorsports, 66 Enfield Street LLC, applicant owner, map 35, lot 45 BG zone.
Thank you. There's a motion to approves made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley. Any discussion on a motion?
No.
Seeing that, Mr. Secretary, roll call whenever you have the opportunity.
Louis Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Your mic's off, John.
Four.
Francis Alimo.
Four.
Kiran Majmuddar.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Christian...
He's an alternate.
Oh, I'm sorry. And John Petronella is four.
Four. Let the record show there was unanimous seven-nothing vote to approve Marx for the Aquifer protection.
Thank you.
So Mark, that one's closed. Mark, could just do me a favor. Can you just stand up and sit down again?
Yeah. New guy.
All right. Thank you.
The old guy just left. Now I'm the new guy.
Will the secretary, when he's ready, read the following one. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. ARA number 2466 Enfield Street, Aquifer renewal for Mineki Muffler located over the A-43 Aquifer 66 Enfield Street LLC, applicant owner, map 35, lot 45 BG zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant or representative here?
Yes.
Again, just for the record.
Oh, yes, yes. Mark Boujack, 3 Lockabana Road in Summers, Connecticut, also at 70 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut.
Thank you. Would the staff like to comment on this application quickly?
Yes. Originally, the applicant also had kind of just replicated the previous forms, so for this renewal, this is only item D. There was a question from DEEP for a second inspection, and I'm just going to read the note that Georgie sent me. "A second site inspection was conducted as requested by DEEP to ensure best housekeeping practices were met. The floors by the waste oil tank have been cleaned, the soiled oil pads replaced, and the drums labeled. It was also confirmed that spill kits are kept on site. The facility is now in full compliance and doesn't require any site-specific conditions for their appeal, and she recommends approval of the renewal."
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mark, would you have anything you'd like to add, or...
I have a picture if you want to see it, but yes, I sent it to her, so you probably have it already.
Yeah.
But yes, they got it all cleaned up.
I think it's in the package.
I think they...
Yeah, we have it.
That's it. So it's all done.
Okay. Is there any questions for the applicant? Seeing that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion...
Oh, sorry.
What does the secretary like to say?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve ARA number 23 in accordance with the staff resolution prepared dated July 21, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion made and seconded, a motion made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner Holinsky.
That's what I thought.
Any discussion on a motion? Seeing that, whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary, roll call.
Yeah. Louis Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
John Petronella is four. Francis Alimo.
Four.
Kiran Majmuddar.
Four.
And Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Let the record show that it was unanimous seven-nothing with the regular commissioners. Seeing that, you're all set with both these properties. You've been approved. Thanks for cooperating with the Aquifer, and have a nice evening.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy summer.
Yes, thank you.
Seeing that, that finishes the business of the Enfield Aquifer Protection Agency on this night. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Holinsky, seconded by Commissioner Higley to adjourn the Aquifer meeting will be on at 7 o'clock for the P&amp;Z meeting. Thank you very much, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission for Thursday, July 28th in session. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, where we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to skip the fire evacuation announcements since we're only us here, there's no one in attendance. Skip the fire evacuation announcements since it's only us in here and we all know the way out, there's no one in attendance. So will the Secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Louis Fiore?
Here.
Virginia Higley?
Here.
Linda DeGray?
Here.
Frances Alimo?
Here.
Kieran Majmoudar?
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Here.
Vinnie Grillo is absent. Christian D. Antonio?
Here.
Nicholas LaFakis?
Here.
And John Petronella is here.
Thank you. Let the record show all the tenants except Mr. Grillo, there's all the regular members are here, so there's no need to seat an alternate tonight. Move on to the approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting for July 14th. Is there a motion made?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray to accept the minutes of July 14th. Is there any additions or corrections anyone feels in need to make? Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from July 14th, please sit by saying aye.
Aye.
But the record showed it was unanimous that the minutes of July 14th have been approved. Everybody received, you know, the paper update on the town attorney's report?
Yep.
I'm not sure if you had a chance to glance at it, but please do so at your own peril or your own time, please. Public participation. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. That also includes any legal activities that are pending. Seeing that no one is in the audience, we will close public participation. There's no bond releases. Moving on to item eight, new public hearings. Basically, we're not going to open this, we're not going to, I'm going to basically read very quickly, is that this applicant has withdrawn their application, so this will be removed after their agenda, they decided not to proceed with this text amendment change.
Mr. Chairman, does please state the public hearing number?
Yes, the public hearing number 3044ZA has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item B, again, no need to read this, since we're going to leave this open, the applicant for public hearing 3043 at 78 Park Avenue, you all received, I think, and also copied this, the applicant is asking for this to be extended until the September meeting, so there's no sense for us even to open this public hearing at this time or table it, it'll just remain on here and be added to the next agenda. Old public hearings, again, we're not taking this off the table, there's no discussion tonight due to an illness to one of the applicants. The applicant and her team have requested that this also be extended to the September 8th meeting.
Do you have to read the PH number?
This would be for PH number 3040MA 1297 Enfield Street. So again, the applicant is asking for an extension, we're going to leave this on the table, we're not even going to take it off.
Mr. Chairman, they are also requesting an extension.
Yes, so they're, yes, they're also asking for an extension, yes. Does everyone have that, okay? Do we need to vote on the extension?
Just motion to, raised hands would be fine.
Sure. The applicant has asked for, you know, not he being here tonight, and also has asked for an extension on this particular application for PH 3040MA 1297 Enfield Street. Is there a motion to grant the extension for this applicant?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Alimo, seconded by Commissioner Holinsky, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, show hands of granting the extension for this application?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven.
Seeing that it was unanimous?
Thank you.
Do you have to do it for Park Avenue?
No, Park Avenue, we're not, we're not going to open up.
Right now.
We didn't open up Park Avenue at all.
Right, right.
There's no new business, there's no other business, or old business, there's no other business. Correspondence, I think that Ms. Witten might have an announcement about the POCD upcoming and its location, maybe just for the record, when we have the opportunity?
That's fine, I was going to give it under Director of Planning report, but I don't care.
I'm sorry, all right.
So we are having a workshop, it's going to be, it's not really a workshop, it's an open house for all the residents and business owners in Enfield, but it's going to be focused on Thompsonville area. It's going to be August 10th from 4:00 to 8:00. It's a drop-in as you can, there's going to be some, basically some poster boards up and to help us, you know, guide some discussion items, you know, kind of more on one-on-one with citizens and the planners and consultants, and this is just to kind of come up with some new ideas and where we want to see the future of Thompsonville. So there was a flyer that went out, and it was going to be held at the old firehouse, but we have changed the venue to this room, the Town Council chambers. So a new flyer will be going out tomorrow digitally, and then we'll be handing it out around town. So we hope everybody in town can come, and we want residents, renters, homeowners, business owners, leaders, everybody, you know, just come on, it'll take about half an hour, and it should be pretty fun and interesting.
Yeah, I highly recommend that if you can, all of us as commissioners, at least try to drop in and participate in the boards that our consultant helping us, the POCD has put together, him and his team. It'll be, you know, be interesting, I don't want to say it's a game-like, but there is, you know, game-like features, and it's a pretty good idea, so I would highly recommend everyone make it. Karen?
Yeah, they were also talking about some volunteers from, from some of us to talk to the residents as they come in.
Yeah.
So if somebody's interested.
Yeah.
Talk to Lori.
It's going to be Wednesday, August 10th, right here in the council chambers.
What was the time, 4:00 to 8:00?
4:00 to 8:00.
From 4:00 to 8:00, like I said, it's an open house, it's not a sit-down and be, you know, listen to the speaker, it's an interactive workshop, so you get to play little games and stuff.
Yeah.
Give your opinions.
Yeah.
That's really what we want.
Thank you. Any commissioners' correspondence? The only thing I'd like to mention, in case I forget at the end very quickly, is that our next meeting for anyone who's watching is September 8th, unless there's a dire emergency, something happens town-wide, there will be no Planning and Zoning meeting in August. Okay, so September 8th, that will be a full agenda. I would imagine that there'd be a full agenda because we're taking five weeks off, and there's a few things that you could see got pushed off from tonight, so I just wanted to mention that, more or less for the public, because I know all of you know that already.
Is there time for applause?
Yeah. Director of Planning report, anything, or?
Ha, I just gave it.
All right, thank you. Applications?
I will say that we will be busy. It'll be nice to not have to do packets, because we're going to really focus on the end of the POCD and start really working on zoning regulations as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, compiling our comments, so.
That came up last night in the POCD, as you know, I think as you all know, we've implied that after the POCD, we're going to start working on voter, voter, I got that going on too, regulations and trying to do some tweaking here, and even just in the last six, seven months, all of us have found little things where it should be and or, you know, things like that. Well, Lori and her staff have been keeping track of all that, so as soon as POC done, is done, we're going to get tackling right into that, so, you know, we're going to have a full six, seven months after this. So any application to be received that you can mention, or?
There is one, XSP number 3045 at 115 Raffia Road, and this is for the JFK Middle School signage.
Okay, so they are coming, they want the larger sign, I take it?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Any opportunities or unresolved issues? Any last comments for, well, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the last, what, seven months, almost eight months, it's been great, you know, and I'm kind of glad we're all getting some time off, I know I needed to have an election to run, so for me, this works out pretty well, but it's been great, and the staff has been great, so have a good summer vacation, everybody, and.
See you in September.
Or I'll see you on Election Day, so if not, we'll see you everybody in September, so with that, I'll take a.
Isn't that a song?
Yeah, it is, you're right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make motion with adjourn?
Motion made by Vice Chairman.
Have a great summer!
Vice Chairman DeGray, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley to adjourn this meeting at 7:11. All those in favor, signify aye.
That is a record.
Let's show it's unanimous.
Yep, actually, I have 7:10 digitally.
This meeting is now closed, thank you very much, and good night, everybody.